I'll move the Northwest Department of Colorado.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Marshburn.
Present.
Councilmember Barringer.
Here.
Councilmember Vance.
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Here.
Councilmember Singleton.
Here.
Next is the adoption of the agenda.
Mayor, I need to, I'm sorry.
All right, go ahead.
Need to add a closed session for property acquisition, potential property acquisition.
One for litigation.
There, okay.
With the addition of those two, I move we approve the agenda as presented with the amendments we just listed. Motion is a second.
Second.
All in favor, vote my say aye.
Aye.
Reports and discussion, Human Resources Committee. Mr. Mayor, I'm pleased to present to this council the recommendations from the HR committee, which is comprised right now of myself and Councilmember Elmo Vance. You have on page two of your agenda packet the names, and of course you also have listed the applications that were submitted. We had a number of applications submitted this year, and we had excess numbers for interest in at least a couple of committees, Parks and Rec being one, and I'm trying to remember the other one, Mr. Vance. We believe there's a good slate of candidates. I can read those each by name, if that's what I should do for the record, or otherwise I will defer to council, having perhaps had a chance to see the names listed. As a general rule, those persons who were serving, whose first term was ending and they desired to serve another term, as long as they were in good standing, they were reappointed. For others, where their terms had ended and they were not eligible for reappointment, obviously we sought to fill those positions. And so, is it necessary, Ms. Clerk or Mr. Attorney, for me to read the names, or does the council desire for me to read those names? Yeah, may I? Okay. For the Planning Commission, our committee recommends a reappointment of John Blasco, Jay Dean Fox, Vera Hogan, and Van, I believe that's Muah, for terms that expired June 30, 2021. For the Board of Adjustment, we recommend reappointing John Milner and Joseph Keller, and we recommend appointing Judith Ratcliffe. As you know, there are alternate positions to be served there, and many times alternates step up to regular positions. We recommend Mr. Willie Dupree and Mr. Ellis Williams, who is present with us this evening. He is, good to see Mr. Williams, often attends our council meetings. Those terms to expire June 30, 2022. Parks and Rec Committee, reappoint Chris O'Connor, and we recommend appointment of Cassandra Lyles and Hope Weber. Those terms expiring in June 2022. And to the Senior Advisory Committee, we recommend reappointment of Charlie Pierce and appointment of Tony DeRico. Again, that expires in 2022. And to the Garner Veterans Advisory Committee, we recommend reappointment of Jeffrey Hicks, and a new appointment on that committee would be Matthew Padon. Again, those terms to expire June 30, 2022. I would submit those to the council for their approval. I might mention, by the way, that I believe there may be a need, this is sort of indirectly related to this, for me and the mayor, and maybe the town clerk to get together in terms of the liaison to different committees. I think most of those stay the same, but with the death of Councilmember Johns. Shifted, that's all. Yeah, those things have shifted, so I think a further meeting to discuss those and to make sure all the council liaison appointments are correct. I would recommend we do that and bring that back to the council. I would ask Mr. Vance, my co-member there, if he has any observations or comments to make.
I would just say that we had a strong slate of candidates, and I believe that they will serve well at the various positions that they're being nominated for.
Okay, thank you, sir. So with that, I guess it's proper for me to move, make the motion that this council appoint the members to the various committees, whose names I have just spoken on the public record. Yeah. That's in the form of the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion, all in favor, vote my say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for your work, guys. Next is the HR Policy Manual Update, BD Sekler.
Mr. Merwah, he's coming up. I'll do a quick intro of this topic. This is a combination of some of the personnel policies and some of the internal practices we've had over the years, and what we're striving to do in this policy manual is combine the two, so there's like one place where employees would go to look for different policies and procedures. Some of these things are things that you typically haven't approved in the past, and some are. It's a new format, and BD, Mr. Sekler's going to walk you through that, and we had a lot of discussion about this, so I fully understand that, you know, you may not want to approve this without having seen the full document. Like I said, it's 300 pages, so what we plan to do, depending on your response to tonight, is set up like a Dropbox or something where you can try to download it to your tablet. It is a lot of information, so we'll have to, we'll work with IT on getting that to you. But it ranges from all kinds of things, from some legislative mandates on how we handle like paper retention or record retention. So it's a lot of information, but we fully understand that, you know, at least some of you may want to look at the whole thing before you take any kind of action, so we were prepared for that. Now I'll turn it over to Mr. Sekler.
Thank you, Mr. Dickerson. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, good evening, members of council. Thank you for your time tonight. Really what I hope to accomplish tonight is two things. I want to walk you through the process that we have gone through over the last 16 months, to comprehensively look at our policies, make sure that they are, in fact, accurate, make sure they reflect the culture and the legislative and legal requirements that we're required to do. I also want to impart upon you the collaborative nature of the process that we've gone through. And so the presentation I have for you is a combination, sorry, thank you, combination of process as well as highlights with regards to some of the minor, some of the intermediate, and some of the more significant changes that are being recommended as a result of this effort. So when we started this process, we set three goals. The first goal was to ensure that our HR policies are up to date, they're clear, consistent, reflect our culture, and meet the legal requirements that were mandated to achieve. We wanted to ensure that the policy manual was user-friendly, that it was formatted properly, searchable, and easy on the eyes with regards to its layout. And third, to ensure policy reviews are completed on an ongoing basis, so that no one else, those of us that were involved in this process, or anyone that comes after us, has to go through the painstaking process that we've gone through over the last 16 months. As I mentioned a moment ago, this was a very collaborative process. We first set a cross-functional team of staff who met, and we reviewed the policy manual literally from the front cover to the back cover. And as you can see there, we had a number of different individuals from a number of different organizations at a number of different levels within the organization providing feedback. And I just want to stop for a moment, and I want to highlight two individuals that without their efforts and their above and beyond contributions, I would not be standing here today. And the first is Brandon, and Brandon, I just want to publicly thank you for that, as well as Kim's story in our HR office. Both of them were instrumental in making sure that we got to this evening. So let me walk you through a little bit of what we've done and where we're at. So we started this process in March of 2018, and between March and August of 2018, the team that you just saw on the previous slide met on a regular basis, and we discussed and reviewed the current policy manual and the changes that we felt needed to be made. Between September 2018 and November of 2018, we went, we met with the manager's office. We met with Mr. Dickerson and the two assistant town managers, obtained their feedback and input. January to March of this year, we made updates and edits based on the feedback that we had received. April and May of this year, we met with the department heads. We reviewed the process with them, and then we also took into consideration their feedback, made those updates and edits, which has led us to this evening, presenting to you here tonight. Project outcomes, and I will get to this in more detail in just a moment. The first, and I think most significant, is our recommendation to shift the town policy responsibility from the town council to the town manager. We currently have a situation in which, literally, if we needed to make changes that were grammatical, the way that it's currently written, we would have to bring those changes back to you for that update. And if you will allow me, I've got a couple more slides to go through, and I'll speak to this point specifically in more detail. Thorough review of all HR policies. We can now feel assured that our policies are accurate, legal, and they reflect our current practices. There's a new format and a numbering system, which makes policies easier to identify and easier to update. And we also have added a process and a timeline for prescribed updates and reviews to ensure compliance, and also to ensure that our policy manual stays up to date, and we don't have to go through as significant a review as we've gone through over the last 16 months. For ease, we've characterized the changes that we've recommended into three categories. The first category is green, same content, but it was moved to a different section of the policy. Yellow, updated policy to match currently agreed town practice, and then red, recommended changes to our current policy. Several examples of green in the policy manual that we have made is consolidation of examples or definitions. We've moved some I-9 language from the conditions of employment to the new recruitment section. We've reordered policies to place greater emphasis on ethical conduct at the beginning of the policy manual, and we've made some, moved some driving language to a separate policy. Some examples of yellow, we clarified HR involvement and responsibility in the recruitment process for the town. We've clarified the need to call 9/11 in the event of an imminent act or threat of violence. We've clarified the process for non-disciplinary suspensions, and we've corrected some EEO language for consistency with the current law. The next set of slides are those areas in red that are more significant in terms of the recommendations that we're making. The first, under the section of general administration, and I've referenced this a moment ago, shifting the approval from council to manager. And if you will allow me, I'd like to just read some short language that reflects a little bit more detail about the changes that we're making. So these would be responsibilities of the town manager. The town manager is responsible for the content of the town's policy manual, and has the authority to approve, modify, or update town policies as contained or reasonably would be contained in the policy manual. The town manager, at their discretion, will advise town council regarding modifications based on federal law or state law, items that may prove to be controversial in matters that have a fiscal or budgetary impact to the town, and/or as a general notice to ensure town council stays up to date with our current policies. Responsibilities of the town council. Town council may, at their discretion, direct the town manager to create, review, and/or modify town policies when in the best interest of the town. So that is the language that we are recommending that would change the responsibility from you as an elected body to the town manager with focus on providing you updates, and also each of you having the opportunity at any time to direct the town manager to make modifications or review policy. In addition, as I mentioned a moment ago, we've set in motion a process for an ongoing update to the manual on a three-year cycle to review each of the policies to make sure that they stay up to date, and we've put in process a team that would do that as well, and we've identified that. In the conditions of employment section, we've added some references to the ICMA Code of Ethics. We've added the ability for the town manager to grant exceptions to the nepotism policy, and we've added some clarifying language to our current tattoo policy. In addition, under harassment and sexual harassment, we've added a determination as to whether there may be a criminal violation that has occurred, and what steps would be taken as a result of that. We've updated a process for taking witness statements. We've removed an under oath requirement that we weren't able to identify why that currently existed, and we've clarified sharing of policy and timing of training. Under drug and alcohol, some definitions have been updated and broken into specific categories. We've lowered the acceptable blood alcohol content that would be a threshold for drugs and alcohol. We've updated references to disciplinary action, and we've removed a requirement for mandatory disciplinary action. Under work eligibility, we've clarified some guidelines for temporary duty eligibility. Under employee benefits, we've added some references to the new optional 457 retirement plan that we just recently implemented for the town. Under employee leave, we've removed the restriction for probationer employees to use vacation. Under separation and reinstatement, we've added some language regarding the town recognition for retirees. Under the disciplinary investigations and actions, we've added employee responsibility language, as well as supervisory responsibility language. We've revised some definitions, and we've clarified the investigation process. Under the driving policy, we've done significant cleanup to the policy, including a reference to a review panel, which again, we've removed from the policy, given that we could not identify where that review panel had existed in the past. That was the list, at a high level, of the significant changes that we have made to the manual. As Mr. Dickerson had referenced, it's close to, I think, over 200 pages. That is a synthesis of the significant changes that we have made. The timeline and next steps, as presented to you tonight, for consideration, the updates and the changes. Our desire, if you were to agree, would have you approve this on consent at your next work council meeting on July 1. At that point, all updates would be retroactive to July 1, 2019, and we would commence the process of communicating the changes and the updates to our staff, as well as rolling out training to ensure that all staff understood the changes and why they were made. We're also planning to do some leadership training based around the policy manual in the late summer timeframe, and the creation of a staff handbook based on the policy manual in the fall of this year. So with that, I will stop talking, and I will be more than happy to entertain any questions or comments that you may have of me.
Good, others?
Mr. Sekler, I want to commend you and the group who formed this committee to undertake this task. As one who, in past employment, has been involved somewhat in processes like this, I have some understanding of the difficulties that are inherent in a task like this, and I can understand how perhaps it has taken some period of time to do. Nevertheless, it's, I think, a very necessary exercise. It's intriguing to me how, over time, an organization can have a policy manual, and many times, things get added, sometimes for no less than, well, I remember three years ago when so-and-so said it ought to be done this way, and so we incorporate that somehow, or it gets just sort of understood, and so there's always. No, no matter what. Right. Or whatever. So that's just, that's just one example. And as you note, over time, sometimes federal regulations change and so forth. So I would say to you, I'm not prepared to sign off on this just yet.
Understood.
It's, it would be a rather arduous task to review the entire thing, but I would want some additional time to review the red, the greens, and the yellows, and some of the other information that is in there. And I'm confident that I find most of that to be certainly an improvement over what we've had, and something that hopefully the council will give serious consideration to in the recommendations you've made.
Thank you.
Again, I thank you for this presentation, and I look forward to having a little further discussion about it before we're ready to vote.
That sounds great.
That's where I am.
And possibly give us some guidance on how long you think you would need to review it, because obviously we're not going to bring it back on July 1, but, you know.
Well, that was.
Well, that was just a recommendation.
But we're certainly prepared to.
Just a recommendation. We talked about not, I knew that was, we all knew that was a possibility, that you would want to review it further, so we were prepared for that, but.
How quickly do we think we can get access to the policy, to the document itself?
We've got the, we've got the actual document ready to go, and I believe with some technical challenges, to make sure that we can get it to your tablets, we can get it to you tomorrow, we hope.
Okay. I would prefer at least a couple of weeks to review it, especially given that a holiday's coming up, and there'll be some absences due to traveling.
Say at least in the next work session. 200 pages I've been working on for 16 months, and y'all want us to look at it in five days. I'm slicing and cutting. It's at least a month.
That's, well, rather disingenuous, but.
And that's fine, we can, I mean, we'll do whatever you ask. There's a lot of things in here that council typically wouldn't even look at, but we can, we'll give you as much time as you want.
I noticed a couple of things that you mentioned, BD, and I would agree that I don't think it needs to come back to council to change grammar, and things about records retention, but if you could give us in the audience that's listening, what kind of actions have, have we been, as we, as the council, have we been responsible for in the past, whether we even recognize it or not, that no longer will have those, have that responsibility?
Yep.
What are some of the things that now the manager will be doing that we would have normally done in the past, and not grammar and record retention? I'm talking about meeting potatoes things.
So the way the current policy manual is written, the policy indicates that any change, whether it be a significant change to policy, or any formatting or grammatical change to the policy, requires council approval. So, you know, there may be a middle ground between the way the current policy is written and what we have recommended with regards to giving that authority to the town manager, but as it's written right now, Mr. Kennedy, literally, anything that we would do, as it's written, would need to come back to council.
Is that essentially what's, the only kind of thing that's being changed, is just any changes that are needed, be handled by the manager and the team, and not come back to council? Is that the most substantive change that goes away from what council has been responsible for?
I would say that's the most significant recommendation coming out of our work. Now, we've made significant changes to policy with regards to matching policy to practice, cleaning up areas similar to, as I mentioned in my presentation, review boards that don't exist anymore. But we've tried to format things differently. We've tried to make it easier on the eyes, easier to be searchable. And in my efforts in terms of benchmarking against other municipalities, in my experience, I found that most of the other municipalities didn't have the same requirements of taking things back to council as our current policy requires.
If you would, tell us, give us an example of, tell us about the blood alcohol level content that changed. The blood alcohol level, or I've tried, I could guess it had something to do with it, BAC. So what does that specifically cover?
If my memory serves me correctly, I'll have to pull up, and I can get this information for you exactly, but I believe that the current policy states that it's 0.04% blood alcohol content triggers some type of action with regards to an alcohol examination on the part of the staff member. We were reducing that to 0.02. So we're making that more stringent and streamlining that to be more consistent with application outside of our current municipality.
We, there were two standards for alcohol levels in there. There's one standard for CDL drivers, and we had another standard for just regular employees that didn't have CDL, so we were trying to just make one consistent so that all employees follow the same standard. If I'm not mistaken, CDL was a 0.02 triggered some action, and we had it at 0.04, and we're trying to make them both consistent, so we don't have two standards.
Something, there's some mention about removing requirements for mandatory disciplinary action. Now, I don't know that council's ever even taken any action on, involved on disciplinary action.
No, you have not. But any changes to the policy would be what you would become involved with, and what that change is requiring is, as it's currently written right now, it stipulates that if we enter into a process like that, there has to be some level of disciplinary action that's taken. This gives us the flexibility. If we investigate and determine, then it gives us the option that no disciplinary action could be one of the options as an outcome.
Any comment on nepotism, granting exceptions?
So again, the nepotism, right now, it's very black and white, and this change in policy gives some discretion to the town manager based on the circumstances. We would still, and have not, recommended a change with regards to a reporting structure, having someone supervise an immediate family member, but it just gives us the flexibility that if we have a unique or odd situation, we have the discretion, at the town manager's discretion, to take action. Right now, we don't have that flexibility.
My last one was, might be at the very end of the list, the restriction for probationary employees to use vacation.
Yes, sir. So we've run into some challenges when we hire staff members. They come into the organization, and when we hire them, they may have had a commitment. We've had several people that have had weddings planned. We've had several people that have had long-term family holidays and vacations that were scheduled a year out in advance, and when they come work for us, the way the current policy is written, we would not be allowed them, we would not allow them to take the accrued vacation that they have accrued during their six-month probationary process, 12 months for officers, sworn police officers, and they would not be able to use that accrued time to take that time off that they had previously scheduled before they came to work for the town. So we're, again, trying to build some flexibility. So, we're, again, trying to build some flexibility into the process to allow the town manager, at his or her discretion, to take into consideration those circumstances.
The document that you have now, and what we will see, it's got the red, green, and...
Yellow.
Yep. So, we've got two separate documents. One is the red, green, yellow document, which by policy number, highlights the changes that are being made, and it's color-coded based on the red, green, yellow format. The second document would be the clean copy of the recommended policy manual. So, it would literally be the entire policy manual, as it would be published if it were to be adopted and approved by this council.
We'd get the colored copy, wouldn't we?
You would get both, if that's what you choose. The colored copy is only a summary of the changes. It doesn't have the entire, I can show you. I know this is an eye test, but this is the red, red, green, yellow document. And so, it's broken out by section. So, as an example, this is the first section. These are the general provisions, and most of these are in red, because those are the significant changes in terms of approval from council to town manager. And then, the second document that you would receive would be this document, which is several hundred pages long, and this is what the new policy manual would look like.
Can you tell me something I should already know? When a new employee is hired, when a person is hired, I guess that would be a new employee.
Yep.
Is a hard copy policy manual presented to them?
Yes.
Okay.
On their first day, we do our new hire orientation, which is called DEPLOY. And a section that I complete of the DEPLOY process is to review highlights of the policy manual. They get a hard copy of the policy manual, and one of the documents, among many, that they're asked to sign in return, is an affirmation statement that indicates that they've been given a copy of the policy manual, and that they've been instructed, if they have questions now, or at any time in the future, where they can go to get those questions answered.
And I'm sure it's obvious that if an employee has misplaced or does not have their policy manual, they can easily go online and reference the manual...
That's right.
...at the town.
We always have the soft copy of the manual on the town's Intranet, which every staff member has access to. We also keep hard copies in Human Resources, at the Police Department, and over at Public Works as well. So, staff members have several opportunities, whether it be online or in hard copy, to gain access to the policy manual at any time.
If an employee should be referencing the manual and have a question that they want to ask, would either perhaps go to their superior, or go directly to HR?
They could do either. We encourage them to initially go to their supervisor, or a member of the leadership team, if they feel so comfortable to do so. Or they can reach out to myself or Kim, and we'll be happy to sit and meet with them as well. And as far as I know, both of those courses of action have taken place on multiple occasions.
Well, we could dig into this and take a long time. I won't ask many more questions, but this is more specific. The section where you refer to examples in yellow where the need to call 911 in the event of an imminent act or threat of violence, that there's something already in policy that references that, is that right?
Yeah, it was inferred in the policy, and we felt it was important to make sure that we explicitly outlined that that is something that should take place.
Okay.
BD, I believe you said that the current, this new policy is approximately 200 pages long. How does that differ from the original policy?
Well, it's probably not an apples-to-apples comparison, Ms. Behringer. And the reason I say that is because the way we formatted the new policies, there are some pages that are half-pages, just to make it look cleaner. I would say in general, that if we synthesized everything down, we're probably not looking at many more pages for the updated version than we were for the current version.
Approximately how many pages was the current version?
I'd have to take a look. I want to say that it was probably double-sided, about 70 or 75 pages.
I mean, one key difference is, the old policy was basically personnel, HR, employment, law-type policies. We had some safety things in there. This new policy attempts to put a lot of other practices into one place. For example, the purchasing policy, for example, would not have been in the personnel's handbook, but it's a policy that we have on how we follow purchasing and finance rules. There are some IT things in here that were not in the personnel handbook, but we're attempting to put all of those procedures into one booklet. And so, there was a pretty good amount of difference between the HR handbook, personnel policies, and what we're attempting to do now, because we wanted it to be in one spot and formatted in one spot.
This page that's up on the screen, and I know it's, again, hard to read, but this is the table of contents. So, Part 1, Part 2 was typically what was our current policy manual, and then, as Mr. Dickerson has referenced, Part 3, Operations Policies, the AED in the vehicle operation. Part 4, our financial policies. And then, Part 5, our IT policies, would be the ones that would be relatively new to this document. They're not new to the town in terms of policies. They were existing policies prior to this effort.
Is it possible to get a copy of the old policy manual electronically?
Sure.
For comparison purposes?
Yep.
And you were, when you brought, you were making a comparison between the colored copy and this, and the clean copy, and you mentioned that the clean copy was several hundred pages. Was that really just the 200 pages, or was it more, is it more than that?
To be honest with you, Mr. Kennedy, I haven't counted them. This is the document.
191, according to the...
191.
Okay. And the red, the colored versions that mention all of the changes, how many pages of that you think there is?
Looks like about seven. It's this document right here.
So, we could go line by line, and just, and it'll tell us where to go?
Yeah. The green, yellow, red speaks to what policy, and highlights the changes that are made. And then, you could go to the policy, which has the corresponding policy number to it. So, for example, this first section here, this is our Part 1, General Provisions. This is the Policies 1000, General Administration, and it summarizes the changes. And then, this is the General Administration Policy 1000. So, this is the clean version. It's four pages long. The other red, green, yellow document highlights the changes that were made.
Two things in there, IT policy and financial.
Yep.
So, that essentially, IT people, were they basically put in charge of rewriting that section and finance, rewriting their policies?
Each of the department heads for those two organizations, Mr. Kelly and Ms. Wertham, assisted us with regards to reviewing and revising those policies. As I mentioned a moment ago, none of them are new policies. They were just policies that were currently in existence, and while we were going through this initiative, we asked them to review those policies as well.
Pam was on the team, not Joanne?
Joanne was on our cross-functional team, but Pam was involved in reviewing the finance policies specifically. The cross-functional team only reviewed the HR policies.
And we did go over all of this with the department head team also, in the department head meeting?
Well, I saw those two, so it, those were so specific that I would... Curiosity's got me. Who had the enviable, most desirable task, actually putting this baby together, so that one person knows what has been and hasn't happened? Because this is not a committee thing. There's only so many things that a committee can do, but this, I don't see a committee putting together something with all of these changes, and it coming out clean.
Yeah. So, that particular task fell on Brandon, and Kim Story helped significantly with that as well. And that's why I mentioned earlier that I would not be standing here presenting this today if I didn't have that assistance and that support.
Chief, how many hours did he put in?
Dozens.
Hundreds?
Maybe, over the course of sixteen months, perhaps. I think, if I may, what is important to take from this is that, I realize it's daunting for us to suggest to you that you just adopt 191 pages. I understand that and appreciate that. But what you're really getting here is much more changes about grammar, consistency of terminology. What we found is that some of our policies have come from other places. Obviously, we don't always reinvent the wheel, but those policies sometimes were adopted, where things were just missed, they would refer to and use terms that aren't used in Garner. So, I'm confident telling you now that through this document, that we consistently use the same terminology, we consistently refer to the way that it's done in Garner. And so, really, the, I realize, again, it's daunting to suggest, look at 191 pages, but if you look at what BD showed you from the spreadsheet that shows the changes, and what he highlighted in his presentation, those 12, or 15, or 16 things are really the only things that are anything that we thought was significant enough that you would even respectfully pay attention to, because the rest of it's just the stuff that's gone on. So, for example, if you look at the IT policies, we changed very little in the IT policy. I think the only thing that was added to the IT policy was the fact that we did never previously denote specifically what access we had to devices that we paid for or stipend. And so, in today's day and age, with public records and things like that, we needed to clarify that if we're paying for your phone, then the town may need to access that phone, because you may have items on it that are relevant to a public records request, things like that. But other than that, we didn't change things about networking or anything like that. And again, the cross-functional team read from the front of the Personnel Policies Manual that existed today to the back of it, and then, we referred to department heads, such as Finance Director and IT Director, to specifically goes through those directives to make sure that we didn't change anything that made it inconsistent with law or inconsistent with practice. Most of that was just changes in terminology and consistency. What may frustrate you, and part of why we did not give you the entire document upfront, is that I think what you may want to see, I may misunderstanding, but you would like to see the old document next to the new document to be able to compare, and that's going to be very difficult to do, because some of the changes are so dramatic in terms of moving things from one policy to another, and restructuring and reorganizing it. But you now have a system where you can go in and pick out one policy, and we can just update a single policy, as opposed to perhaps where in the past, we may have stacked up or waited on several things to do it all at once, because it had to come before you. You recall that, I don't recall, probably seven or eight years ago, the Personnel Policies Manual was actually an ordinance, and that's where some of this started. Why it had to come before you was because it was an ordinance that had to be changed anytime we changed that Personnel Policies Manual. So, I think when Mary Beth was here, we took that out of person, out of ordinance, because we were one of the few left, literally in the state, that did that, and instead, just made it an internal, sort of an operating document. So, from there, what we've tried to do is take those personnel policies, and then add to them the finance, the IT, and the operations, and have it be a one-stop-shop for any policy that we have that impacts employees across the board. There are other departments that may have policies, but they only impact those employees. I have policies in the Police Department, but they don't impact BD, or finance staff, or anyone else, because they're not, they're relevant only to police officers or staff. But these, what you see in this new manual, combines everything in a one-stop-shop, to where you can go to the Intranet for us, and always make sure that you're finding that document, and knowing that it's the current document, and there's only one version of it out there.
So, there's not a document that is perhaps 110 pages long, that's got green, and, or the old, and with strike-through, the fashioned way?
There is. There is. But, and I will give that document to you if you ask me to, or we will, sorry, not me, we will. But it is going to be frustrating, because there is so much markup in it, that it sometimes makes it difficult to follow, because it's not just even changing things within a given, what used to be a section of Personnel Policies Manual. Sometimes, it's moving it within that policy, but sometimes, it's even shifting it to another policy in this new structure, where it fit better. So, there is a markup document, and it's well over 200 pages, because there's, again, a lot of movement, a lot of shifting. That was the idea behind the spreadsheet that has the red, yellow, green, was to highlight for you and others, and the department heads as well, when we presented it to them, anything that we had changed, particularly items in red that were of significance, that we were basically asking the town manager, and then ultimately, you to say, yes, we will change the way we do business to do that. The items in yellow, we've already changed the practice, we may just not have caught up the policy. And then, the items in green are really just nothing. They just move things around.
If you've got a red one, a red reference, will we be able to readily identify it on the sheet? Not, it won't be in red, but we've got to read into it, and then go compare it to really a different document, to know what is being changed in...
That's correct. Off the clean copy, you would not be able to easily identify what those changes were.
Okay.
You'd have to either look at the marked-up copy, or compare the red, yellow, green Excel document to the policy you're looking at, and match it up that way.
I think you've been politely trying to tell us, and we probably wouldn't, after we read it, we wondered why we read it.
I think there would certainly be some of that, yes, sir. I think that's, and again, there's two edges to that. In some cases, it's very straightforward. The nepotism policy, we simply change the language to say that at the discretion of the town manager, you could hire a relative. You know, an example for that would be, I have a part-time employee who had a child who was interested in being a police officer. I could not hire that child, because his mom worked part-time in the Police Department. Never would have had a supervisor interaction, because she would have never been in that position, but with a blanket "you can't do it" policy, couldn't hire that person to be a police officer. That would be an example of what I think is something where the manager might say, okay, that employee's never going to be responsible to their mom, they're not going to work even in the same division of the department. The only thing they might do is see each other in the hallway. Maybe that's an exception to allow that to happen. So, that's an example of where we were suggesting a change in policy. And then, some of the other areas where it's going to be a little more difficult to find it, would be perhaps in disciplinary action. The disciplinary investigations and actions policy now is just fairly dramatically different from what we had, trying to simplify things for supervisors, because a lot of our supervisors, just fortunately, because we have good employees, they don't deal with that very often. So, we've tried to slim it down, and tried to create some additional cheat sheets, if you will, that sort of highlight the steps to go through, so that if presented with that, they are sure that they're following policy, without having to read, you know, 10, 12 pages and sort it out. But it is there if they need it, when they deal with those kind of isolated issues.
If my memory serves me correctly, the former town manager instituted the nepotism policy. So, why did he do that if we don't need it? I'm confused here.
The former nepotism policy said that you could not supervise someone that was a family member of your own. So, we had situations where we've had in the past, employees that worked in the same department that were relatives. Just you could not allow anyone to supervise someone, or be supervised by someone that was their relative. That was changed several years back to eliminate, you couldn't hire anyone else in the department. I don't know the specifics of what spawned that. I wasn't part of that conversation. But again, I just think if it's set in stone like that, all we're asking for is an exception in isolated situations like the one I've described, where you clearly wouldn't have a supervisory concern. And so, you'd have a situation where a department head, such as myself, would believe that it was appropriate... that it was appropriate to hire that person, particularly in today's day and age where we don't always have the candidate pool we might hope for, and then take that to the manager for him to look at it more globally and say yay or perhaps nay.
We, we had a situation where, um, more than once, one situation where two related employees worked in the same department or division and one got a promotion. So that then put a relative over another relative. Well, there are some situations where two related employees could work in the same division or same department and one's probably never going to get promoted to a position where they would be supervising the relative. So those type of exceptions, looking at that, and that's what, what we're asking for now. Uh, where there's no possibility of having that because if that happened, one of them would have to move or, you know, find another job or, or whatever.
Okay. Well, I understand what you're saying. I just, I'm just finding it a little confusing that just a few years ago was instituted and now we're taking it away. I, I don't have a problem with taking it away. I just, um.
We're not taking away the whole policy. We're just making it, some discretion for certain situations that may not have been thought about when it was put in place, but we're not, we're not taking it away.
A couple of observations that I would make, um, or maybe see clarification, I guess. Um, when BD, you indicated that in, in response to Councilmember Kennedy's question about, you know, it's hard for a committee to rewrite the whole thing. So somebody's got to be in charge of doing that. In this case, uh, Mr. Zudema was responsible for that. So, uh, that to me does not mean that the police, police chief then had sort of a blanket authority to make all the interpretations in terms of what the final policy statement should, should be made. He was just to take the information from the committee, put it in its, its, its final version and then I'm sure the committee, uh, looked at it and had an opportunity to, to change or add or amend as they saw fit.
That, that's absolutely correct. No, Brandon did not make, make those changes unilaterally. Uh, the, the cross-functional team we met for those four or five months, we made the recommendations. Um, Brandon helped us with regards to, to keeping up with that, putting it in a format that allowed us to track it, review it. Um, and then as, as this slide indicates, we then took it to the manager's office as a recommendation from the committee. Um, each of the assistant town managers and the town manager had a separate copy. They spent several months reviewing it of their own discretion. We then came back together. We received their feedback. We then updated and edited based on that feedback. We then took it to the department heads. We allowed them to provide us feedback. We made changes as a result of the feedback that they provided to us. That final version is then what, uh, you will be receiving tomorrow to, to review. So this was a very, I'm sorry, I was just going to say, this was a very collaborative process. There wasn't any one person, myself or anyone else, that unilaterally was making decisions. We were doing our best that we could, which is why I believe it took as long as it did. Now, that's not a negative. It's actually a positive. But I think the end product is going to be a much stronger end product as a result of the input that everyone received as opposed to, um, one individual or a small group of individuals making those recommendations without feedback from others.
Let me give you a little more insight and context of why, um, Chief Zudema was a good person for that because as you can imagine, police has a multitude of policies and if they put them together, it might be even thicker than the town's policy. Anything from how to handle their weapons, use of force, uh, pursuit policy, et cetera, et cetera. And they have to compile these things on a regular basis with their Kalia accreditation. So, um, one thing he was good at is how do you take all of these and put them in a systematic and orderly format where they can be found and placed in, um, something that looked reasonable. And so when you look at it, you see this new nomenclature where, you know, the first section is called Section 1000. So every time we add something to it, it's going to be called 1,000 point X, or 1,000 point five or whatever. So he was really instrumental in helping us with the numbering and formatting because they, that's what they do, you know, and they have a lot of practice. Whereas most of our employees did not have that expertise, so.
The, the other observation I would make that maybe is implied and perhaps it sounds negative, uh, in the context. But, uh, as I understand this process, that, nobody was looking to impinge on the authority or oversight responsibility of the council. In fact, in some ways, this process, um, the corrections are designed, it would seem to me, to, to, to make it even easier for council to not have to get into the minutia of, of very minor and detailed sort of, sorts of wording. Whereas before the policy, it wasn't clear on that or the policy generally stated that any changes that were made had to come back to council. So.
That's right. That's right.
That is a, has a positive in, uh, assisting council in, in its role as oversight for, for all policy and, uh, understanding it and determining, uh, when it needs to step in.
That's right.
I guess a copy on July the first.
Oh, no, I, I think we're going to bring it back in a month, work session.
Work session in July, I guess. But we'll, we'll, we'll give you a copy of the red, green, yellow. We'll give you a copy of the current policy manual as it exists today. And then we'll give you a copy of the proposed or recommended policy manual. Are there any other, um, documents or pieces of information that you would like for us to provide to you?
Yeah, that will all be in electronic format, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Great. Thank you very much for your time tonight. I greatly appreciate it.
Jeff Theresa-Burke, Fee and Lew roadway improvements.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Um, not seeing. I'm opting for. You're going to make use of the internet here in a little bit, so I'll just go ahead and pull that up. Um, so this is not the, the first time that I've been before you to talk about this. Um, except for Mr. Vance would not have been here back in October. Um, but we have been discussing and trying to see what we can do to try to recoup, um, a little bit more in the way of funding that we can be contributing to road improvements that previously, uh, had just been being left, uh, incomplete and subject to whenever the town might have funds to complete a road, uh, in the future. Um, in, in the past, we've had a such, a lot of situations where roads are required to be extended through the property as part of a development. But due to one constraint or another, um, it was not physically practical for the developer to build that road without having to secure easements, um, even temporary or permanent, um, to actually make those road improvements. And as we know, that's quite often difficult, um, for a developer to get the cooperation of a neighborhood or from a neighboring property owner. Uh, and unless the town is willing to go ahead and do the condemnation authority, um, again, that even that in and of itself is difficult sometimes. Um, so we've looked at fee and lieu language of the improvements and we have another option, uh, to put before developers. Um, and also then be able to secure away the funding for those improvements until a future date at which those improvements can actually be made. Uh, whether the town comes in and does a project or the neighboring property finally comes to the table with a development proposal, uh, those funds can either be used by the town or handed over to the other, the second developer to actually complete those improvement projects. So we did a survey of some of our peers in Wake County to see what exactly, what circumstances under which they would accept a fee and lieu. Obviously, this is not something we want to just exercise because we can. Um, we'd rather get the improvements done when the development is happening. But there are, are certainly cases where we could benefit from being able to accept a fee and lieu. So having gone through that peer review in Wake County, um, staff has identified four, uh, four primary circumstances under which we'd like to be able to accept a fee and lieu and incorporate that into some ordinance language, uh, that can be. We will work with, uh, Mr. Anderson's office and with the town engineer as well on coming up with that, uh, prior to a public hearing. The first three were fairly straightforward, especially the first two. Um, but on the last page of the memo, um, you'll see that the first two are environmental, topographical related. Uh, the first one is when you have a string crossing that coincides with the property line. Uh, the Neuse River buffer rules severely inhibit what you can do without a road improvement being on your transportation plan. So if it's just local connectivity that you're trying to achieve, sometimes you can get that through. It really just depends on how many, how many crossings and how much impact you're having as to whether or not that can even be permitted. Um, but obviously that's a circumstance where you do have to get the cooperation of the neighboring property owner because when you put the bridge or the culvert in place, it's got to land on your neighbor's property. Um, so that is one very clear case where we would like to be able to accept a fee and lieu. Uh, the current developer would be responsible for coming up with the estimate of what that crossing would cost. Um, and that's actually the fifth bullet on that page, but, so I'll just jump to the, down to that a little bit as well. Um, responsible for coming up with the estimate, the town engineer would need to review. Everyone would have to agree that that is the expected cost of the improvement. If the property line were to fall halfway, um, we'd probably suggest splitting it fifty-fifty, but sometimes the property line sits a little bit further and might be outside in the floodplain. And so the majority of it may be the responsibility or fall on the, the first developer's property and only a very small percentage on the second. I think we would propose to give, be able to give some latitude to assign the percentages accordingly. Um, so I would look for, for that. Um, we'll have to be very particular about how we craft that language, but we do think there are, there have been plenty of instances just in my tenure here where that would be helpful, where it clearly was not just a half and half kind of situation. Um, the second bullet, uh, really addresses more, uh, steep slope and grading issues. Um, a lot of times you can't expect the developer to be able to build the road right to the property line. Um, so I thought it was interesting that Apex, I think, was the community that said, well, if you can build it within ten feet, that's good. We'll have the right-of-way all the way to the property line. When the adjacent developer comes in, they'll just have to, to connect in and come over that and finish that five to 10 feet. Um, but sometimes the grading works out that you still need to go, even though you might be within 25 feet, um, you still can't build it to within 10 feet without getting some kind of construction temporary, temporary easement or otherwise from the neighboring property owner. Um, we had that come up in Ashton Forest off of Creech Road, uh, with one of their street stubs to the north. Um, fortunately, they were actually able to work with the property owner and get the necessary, uh, temporary easement. But it was one of those situations where they could get to about thirty, thirty-five feet of the property line, but to go any further, they had to grade onto the adjacent property. Um, so this could come in handy, um, if that kind of negotiation were to go south. Um, we could then take a fee and lieu for the remaining portion that could not be constructed due to their inability to get the easements necessary. Um, the third one is also fairly common. Uh, it's a little more involved, but basically what it boils down to is that if either the town or the state, and for us, that could potentially be through the LAP program or through the state SPOT program, if there is a project, for instance, with, um, a good example for us would be the roundabout at Akron, Hebron and White Oak. That is now a funded project that's moving forward. Um, so if we have a developer that comes to the table in that area and it's determined that they need to, through either the TIA or DOT, um, or even if it's a frontage improvement that overlaps with that project area, rather than have those folks go out and do their little piece, um, it may make more sense to let the funded project just deal with it holistically and not have to work around this other developer who's going to do one small piece of the larger puzzle. Um, so this would then enable us to go ahead and take that, uh, as a fee and lieu and then contribute it actually through our match to that funded project. So we could very, very well find ourselves in situations where we've committed a local match. Um, we've, we may or may not have set aside specific funds or we may have given direction as to where those funds should be taken. Um, but in the intervening time, if a project comes to the table and their improvement falls in that same area, we could then, like I say, take the fee and lieu, put that in an accounting fund and then contribute that once the local match becomes due. And we've actually come up with, you know, 25, 30%, let's just say, of our match and offset those original cost estimates that we thought we were going to have to incur. The last one, uh, number, the fourth bullet, this is the one that's going to take us a little bit of time to work with the town attorney's office to get the language right for. Um, and there's really no other peer community that has done this per se. Um, but this would specifically come about from our negotiations with the developers when reviewing their traffic impact study. To date, um, the town has only ever insisted and agreed with DOT that if they've identified intersection improvements, that those intersection improvements off-site will be done. And for the most part, I think with other communities, they don't have to go any further than that. They may, they may disagree with the scope of DOT. So let's say we've got a project on New Bethel and we've asked them to study the intersection at New Bethel and 50. That's the closest intersection. That would seem to make sense that that's where most of the impact's going to be felt. Um, and it may be that there's really no additional improvements to be made because the intersection improvements that could be made have already been made by other developers. So there's nothing more to do right at that intersection. A lot of other communities will then take it to whatever the next intersection is. In our case, we don't really hit another significant intersection until you get to 50 and Timber. Again, both of those roads are built out and so how far, how far can you carry that? And what we've really come to realize in the last few years is that we have a very unique circumstance with Southeast Garner. Anything that happens there, as you know, has to come out in one of two ways. It either has to come out on 50 or it has to come out on White Oak Road. There's no other way to get to Timber Drive or any other point further north without getting on one of those two facilities. So I'm going to just view it in on the, the mapping system. We're going to zoom into that area. And this is a situation that we're actually dealing with, um, right now. I don't know how well this is going to show up, but hopefully it will a little bit. I don't know how well this is going to show up, but hopefully it will a little bit. So folks are either coming out here on New Bethel Church Road to 50, or they're coming out here at Hebron Church and White Oak. We've had probably four or five subdivisions in the last few years that have come in, plus the school. Between all of those approvals, all of the possible intersection improvements, just intersection, have pretty much been done at 50 and New Bethel. You could add more turn lanes, but what does, you know, there's already a double left coming off of southbound. There's a very long right-hand turn going on to 50 northbound that goes by Bella Rose, and then you're back down to two lanes. And then the town, we've now worked through the LAP program to fund the improvements at Ackerman. So there's really nothing left, and the congestion management reports that are coming back from TIAs are basically saying there's nothing left to do. And DOT, from the way I understand it, really only has the authority to request intersection improvements, things that address the operational capacity of those intersections. We all know that that's not really the only issue. The other issue is just the capacity of the travel ways themselves. So we've identified through this process that really the next things that can be done are really to add lanes to 50 or add lanes to White Oak. We all know that's what ultimately has to happen. And we also realize that 50 may get funded through SPOT, through the state process, White Oak. There's just, unless we come up with something, it will probably never get funded. So this would allow us to have those negotiations with the developers. I mean, we've got proposals already for, you know, another 400 homes, another 700 homes. These are sizable projects that are contributing sizable amounts of traffic to the network. And it's staff's opinion that they should not be able to just move on through the process with a simple response from DOT that all the intersection improvements are made, we're not going to require, we can't require you to do anything else. That being said, we know that you just can't go out and build 1,200 feet of another lane on 50. Those projects have to be done holistically as well to a certain degree. You can't, we can't widen, for example, between New Bethel and Foxbury without addressing the section from Foxbury up to Evolve. If you do that, you're opening it up to, you know, two lanes of northbound traffic, but ultimately, you're still coming back down to one. That doesn't really solve the problem. So we have this situation where the developers are willing to engage in these discussions with us. They've run the numbers, they know they're making the impact, but at the same time, because it's a DOT-controlled road, it's got to go through their review process, and they're not going to just allow you to widen one piece at a time. So it would be helpful there as well to be able, as a result of these TIA negotiations, we can say, "Hey, we agree between the two of us that adding 1,200 feet of a second lane would be appropriate for the impact we're going to have. Let them price that out, what it would be, and submit that as a fee in lieu. Is it going to cover the whole cost of what's ultimately needed? No. But again, it puts us in a much better position of being able to either through the SPOT process or any other kind of LAP matching program, be building up some funds that we can actually put and compete better to get those projects built, once we have enough to then address the whole corridor. Even if it is just from New Bethel to Timber, that alone would open it up and gets you to the point at Timber Drive at which traffic disperses and then congestion's not so much an issue anymore." So again, it's a very unique situation. I don't know of many other places in the county where this probably comes up, but I was very surprised initially to actually get a congestion management report back for a 750-home subdivision that basically said, "You don't have to do anything." And so, staff, we feel it's our responsibility to go back to the developer and say, "Hey, we understand all the improvements are done for those intersections, but you've still got to try to come to the table and help us with traffic as a whole." So those are the four bullets for the types of fee in lieu that we'd like to be able to take. And with your approval, we'd like to go ahead and schedule a public hearing for the first meeting in August, and that would give us the next month to kind of work with the town attorney's office and with the town engineer to come up with a specific language, if you all are comfortable with heading in this direction.
You are opening up a can of worms. It's good intention, but I got stuck on the, probably on the second one, trying to figure out an example. And the first thing that strikes me is if you, where does a stub out on a subdivision, somebody's going to a property line with a, it serves absolutely no purpose except, I don't know, 60 years ago, people dating found all the dead ends in Lover's Lane. I don't know whether they even do that anymore, they just go on home. But times have changed. But if, as a simple example on a dead end and a stub out in a subdivision, thinking it is a very logical place that that road will continue five, 10 years down the road. But we've seen some instances since I've been on council where we've taken those roads off. And I don't know whether you would call it Forest Hills, but White Avenue. There was a dead end in there, and we rescinded that whole thing and went back. I'm not sure where it went. Suppose somebody had put money in the bank then, and the people that put the money in the bank for that road to be built, 30 years from now, when it happens, they aren't even here, what happens to the dollars? Another one, another example, typical situation where today you put in, you arrive at a cost that maybe the fee in lieu was $100,000 that the developer needs to pay. And it's 10 years from now, and price escalates, but that $100,000 stays the same because it's not being invested, it's not keeping up with inflation. It's a disproportionate amount. It, this is going to be a real struggle. I'm not one for, before we go to a public hearing, I think it would be helpful, and I'm, I think it would, this is an item to be referred to Public Works Committee, and let's talk about some specifics and try to walk through some of these to see what some of the, it's really hard to come up with known circum, what's the word I'm looking for? Unintended consequences. It's hard to project the known consequences. It's those unintended ones that kick you in the seat. But Jeff, before we try to explain this, let's have a, what do you think, Ray? I mean, I hate having a Public Works Committee meeting just to hash something like this, but I think before it goes public, we need to be able to explain it and try to identify some of the hidden stumps out there.
So just two immediate things that come to mind. You know, I think one of the things that has to happen is that you have to insist on connectivity. When it is stubbed, the stub has to work, and so it cannot be something where, you know, you just waive that connection responsibility in the future that you do have to commit to. And we've talked about that before, that just as much as we don't want cut-through traffic, people have to have additional opportunities to get out of their subdivision these days. So, you know, a lot of those in the past that I've seen and observed in Garner, it was just more of a, it wasn't that the stub couldn't, the connection couldn't have been made, it just was decided not to for whatever reason. And very much understood about the lack of price escalation. You know, the developer on the other side is still going to have that responsibility to make the connection, but at least, I guess my initial response would be is at least there's something to offer them at that time, even if it's not the full, it doesn't really fully cover the cost. It's better than the alternative, I think, of having nothing. But that is, that is something that anytime you take a fee in lieu, that's something you just kind of have to accept as a possibility.
Then you get into a debate, and it puts a whole lot of responsibility on, one, the developer to come up with the price, and then for the engineer to be the bad guy that says, "No, it's about 50% more than what you're trying to get away with."
But I'm perfectly, perfectly good with that. I think that could even work still within the process if we could schedule something even during the month of July, if that's an option, but more than happy to do that.
I think we talked, you talked to us before about the need that we don't have a clear policy about the stubbing requirements, the frontage requirements, that's got to happen. Obviously, other towns in Wake County have it, we're lagging behind. So that needs to be clarified. Improvements on other parts of the road, hey, I don't disagree with that at all. I think if you put it to a vote of most citizens, most citizens overwhelmingly would approve that. And with the cost of, I think everyone's realizing that the road does not pay for itself. I think you can pretty much prove that. Something's going to have to help. It's just like, you know, I know people that want to do both roads complaining about the road. When's DOT going to widen it? Never. They're never going to widen. The only way it's going to widen is through development. It's never going to get improved. I mean, White Oak's not going to get improved, and we know that chances that are slim and none. You know New Bethel's not, or any of those other roads. 50 is on the long range staying for DOT, but that's, you know, they're not going to do 50 till they finish 40. You do the biggest road, moves the most traffic. And we also saw the cost last year that from Cleveland School Road to Timber was $95 million, split in two different, 42 and 43 million. We're not, somebody asked me the other day, why didn't the town widen 50? I said, "Because it's $43 million to the round road." I said, "The town puts in $5 million. You know, we're going to take it a few hundred feet, and that's it." I said, "We just don't have that much of, cannot have that much of an impact." But yes, if you, we can get a meeting in Public Works just to clarify some things, we'll be fine, because I did notice on your last line, when you talked about the fee, you took a lot of what was in the Apex policy basically and dropped it down in there. I was noticing the Fuqua policy had fees plus some other costs, and I just wanted, we can talk about that at Public Works just to clarify that, because there's 25% surveying, engineering, design, this, that, and the other. That may be, excuse me, already wrapped up in what you have here. I just want to clarify that the estimate is as close as possible to current day cost. We all realize that they may pay or put a fee in lieu of, and it's done in five years, and that fee in lieu of is 25% short. That's just a fact of life. We can't, you can't, it's not a perfect system.
The goal there is to be, I debated which one to kind of present to you. My goal is always there to try to be as comprehensive as possible with as few words as necessary.
One, that's a lot less work, not that I'll say that, but I just wanted to make sure that the cost estimate encompasses everything in the same way. And I don't know if that's, you'd have to explain that to me.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with referring it to Public Works Committee. There's just a couple of comments I would make, one of them somewhat frivolous. I heard two or three times the word "never" used. I'm reminded that, I think it's a phrase from an old song that says, "Until the 12th, never," and that's a very long time, and it is, so that sounds almost hopeless. But anything we can do to, to deal with traffic issues as development occurs, you know, this Not understanding fully all the implications of it, but looking at it 10,000. Like this is a good place to go from here.
If you got, the portion of the map that you got on the screen right now, there's several places in there that will, if they're ever extended, it will be an extremely long time because you'd have to annihilate a subdivision, or a shopping center. I mean, there's two or three places on there that, enough said tonight. I don't have the magic answer for this. I'd love for us to be, I'd love to hear what we're going to use as examples and see how, before we ever go to, bring the public in, because once you start trying to explain it to them, that's a...
I have a couple that are on the front burner that we can talk about.
I'm sure you wouldn't be bringing it up unless it was an issue before. You got plenty of fish to fry, and you've got something that's, probably you have something that are fresh caught that need to be fried.
Jeff, just, I think you restated what was already said. You do believe that we can still do this, take this step, and also be able to meet some of the timing of the schedule you had originally laid out?
I think so. If we can find a date for the subcommittee in July, I think so.
Okay.
We need to schedule a committee meeting and reschedule a public hearing.
Public hearing has not been scheduled yet. There was just a suggestion to have one, so no reschedule there. And we actually have dates for the Public Works Committee to suggest later tonight because we had other issues we wanted to bring to you in the first half of July. So if it's appropriate, Mr. Mayor, I can just talk to the committee members after the meeting with potential dates that we've identified.
Sounds like a reasonable next step, anyway.
Thank you for getting it kick-started.
Yes, Jeff.
That's it, thank you.
Let's put a manager's report.
I don't have any tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, so let's start with Elmo.
Counselor boards.
Senator report.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Just a question for Mr. Trezenberg. Jeff, you mentioned New Bethel, you mentioned New Bethel Church Road. Some time ago, there was a plan in place to replace that bridge?
Yes.
Can you provide a status on that, any?
I need to get one, because the last status update I had was that it was imminent, but that has not panned out. So if I may, give me a week or two to track that down, and I can get you a status update.
And in reference to the study that was being done by the, the planner, the transportation planner, where he left, there was a work order or a contract that was being initiated for the study of improving Jones Sausage Road. Has that been executed?
That contract is circulating right now for signature. That contract is circulating right now for signature. Had a, just an update phone call with them to try to get me up to speed on Friday, and so we're still on schedule, assuming that the contract gets through its signature process.
Saying that when you lose someone who's been a project manager, has a tendency to take a while for that learning curve for someone else to pick up where the other person left off? So you see that the schedule is still going to be in place for that?
I thi, I think so, I think so. As long as I can stay up to speed with everything that they're doing. But they, they're aware of the situation and they're, they've committed to weekly phone calls with me so that we can stay on top of it.
And also in reference to, one last thing, Mr. Mayor, also in reference to the bridge replacement project on 50 going over 70, that is, they have started, it looks like they're started to look at utilities, movement of utilities. Do you have any status on that, on that piece?
Had reached out to the project manager just before he left, and we have not received any updated schedule for them. They have started acquiring property that is in the right of way, that actually demolished some of that property, and I also observed utility markings being done today and utility representatives on site. So if we can get any update on that, we will let you know.
At the Roarbrow Bridge, I was not, I didn't hear it well.
Howie 50 Bridge Replacement.
Over 70.
Okay.
And I did actually get a late email inquiry from one of the property owners out there as well, that apparently they're trying to negotiate price for the, the easement that they're having to give. So they, they are active.
One last question, in reference to, this is a Public Works question. In reference to the issue of rain runoff on New, New Ran Road, there was a problem with grass growing up to the point where it wasn't getting to the, getting to the storm drains. Does anyone know whether that has been corrected or not? Or if there's a work, a work order in place to get that corrected?
We'll need to follow up with that. That was turned over to DOT maintenance, and I don't know the schedule for them to complete that, so we'll have to check into that. Mr. Roy Lance was working with that.
Is it possible to give a schedule to find out when they have it?
We, we can try to, they don't always offer up what their schedules are, but we can inquire and see if we can get more information.
The reason I ask is because it's becoming, it's hurricane season, so it's going to be downpour as possibly. Well, I have, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Well, it's, Elmo started the New Ran Road saga here. As you are approaching 70 from the north on New Ran Road, if you're trying to make a right turn, there's a smart, a sharp drop-off of pavement into the dirt where it's just been worn down, and it really needs some field dirt or some pavement or something to build that back up. Is that our responsibility, or is that DOT's responsibility?
It's a DOT road, but if we want it done in an expeditious manner, we might have to look at it.
Yeah, it's been getting worse and worse and worse, pretty sharp drop-off, just where tires, tires have gone off the pavement, trying to get by the person in the center lane so that you can then make a right turn and go on.
When we inquire about the other issue, we'll also turn that one in and see what can be done.
And just one other thing, tonight, Jeff, I think this is your night, I recently had a potential developer, co, co, development, developer, there we go, compliment you on how easy you were to work with and how you tended to want to solve rather than defend, so appreciate your hard work.
Just a couple of observations, Mr. Mayor. I think I was reminded this evening of the value of these work sessions. When you come to difficult and complex issues, they have to be discussed and worked through. And tonight, HR was on the front end of this. Policy writing, manuals, and doing all that is difficult, took them a long time, but I commend the effort. Same thing's true with Mr. Trezenberg appeared before us, and discussing issue that has befuddled not only our town, but a lot of others, I suppose. And again, I appreciate the expertise and the work of our, our staff in trying to help us work through the process. It's never, it's never easy. And the final thing I would say, Mr. Mayor, is I look forward to the annual event that this town puts on, on July the 3rd next week. Look forward to being there. Thank you.
Great.
Mayor, I touched on something briefly on the, the employee manual, the HR manual. I appreciate the hard work everybody's done, the time spent, but I'll say this, I think Chief Zudim, I should probably have more, other things you should be paying attention to than formatting the HR employee manual, that should be done by the HR staff. I know he has to do it with his job, that should be a job for the HR staff, it's a HR manual, not the police chief manual, and the HR staff should be doing it. You've got two full-time employees, y'all learn how to format it because you got to deal with it. I'm sorry, it's just blunt and to the point, but that should never happen. I'm sorry. He's got a lot of things, a lot of responsibilities he has to deal with, and that's what he should be focusing on, not formatting the HR employee manual. I'll be quiet, or I might really get wound up.
We've had some discussions in the past about housing, getting better educated on it, just some recommended changes in some reallocation of personnel and, and resources. And one of the things that I think would be a benefit to us so that we know what we're working from, and I will get more into discussions from, beyond the depth that, that can be carried on here, but I think we, I think it would be, we would be well advised for us to have a housing inventory. Because when people talk about housing, there's so many variations and misconceptions, and I can say one thing, and it's interpreted by other, other folks, but we need to get some basic education, and it starts with, what have we got? So when somebody says Garner needs to do this, or doesn't need to do that, we're pretty well equipped to understand where we stand in county.
So how do you, well, how do you, I mean, what do, what do you want? Have an average price, reduce that people and give you on a monthly basis what's sold, what's new is sold, and what existing is sold.
And give us, something as simple as, give us, um, give us the number of homes that are $100,000 or less, number from 100 to 200, 200 to 300, 3 to 5, greater than 5. Apartments, what's the inventory?
All residential property.
May not be practical, I, I, but I don't see how, how you engage, or, I don't know how you have discussions or respond to requests when you don't know what you got.
Well, with the devil's advocate here, I understand what you're trying to get to, but have that information just for Garner, then unless you have the information for all the other towns in the area, how do you want to compare it to?
Let me ask, let me ask something here. Do we have representation from Garner on the committee in Wake County that is addressing the housing issue? I, I talked with Commissioner Holmes about that a couple of months ago, and she hasn't followed up with me. My understanding is we don't have representation from Garner on that council.
We're just the recipient.
We're just, I'm sorry?
We just must be the recipient.
Well, agreed, and I think we need representation on that committee.
Well, I know, I know at one point, the Economic Development Director was on a housing committee, and I don't know if that finished their first...
I'm only aware of a committee that was formed, that helped form the Wake Housing Plan that came out, I think, a year and a half ago. I'm not aware of an ongoing committee, if there is one, we can certainly seek out whether there's, but I'm not aware of one that is an ongoing committee that there's representation on.
I was, I'm efficient that there is, I may be wrong, but that was what I seemed to get from her at that meeting.
Okay.
She said we weren't representing.
I, I know we've not turned an invitation down, and so if, if one has, if there's something out there that we're not aware of, we'll, we'll follow up and see.
Because we need a, we need a voice at the table, if there is a committee.
Okay.
This is a project that was approved.
What do we have?
Apartments off of, uh...
High Winds?
High Winds, what's it called, on Timberline.
Pine, Pine View.
Went to the media, the house, the assistance they got was, was, uh, by Wake County Commissioners, and I think the city council of Raleigh. But they're controlling the funds, not us. Just like all this money for the proposed soccer stadium, who gets to vote on it? Not us.
But if we are at the table, at least we have information to work with.
Be without, no, I'm just telling you.
We need to make arrangements to get over it.
I think my question showed my pure ignorance on the subject, and our subsequent discussion shows that we could all be better informed.
Anything else?
Go to closed session?
Two items, closed session.
Four, two items, one was... Right, Mr. Anderson, read the session.
There would be NCGS 143, 318, 11A3 to discuss, about 44, we just drive and closed session to involve discussion of potential consideration of real estate under NCGS 143.
Second motion.
143, 138, 11A5.
Mr. Marsh, can second it.
Second motion, yeah.
All right, we're going to closed session.
The council has returned from closed session where they discussed potential litigation and also possible land acquisition, and no action was taken at this time. Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Second, all in favor of us, and I?
Aye.